All right, so we are on to the consent calendar. Is there a motion? To approve the consent calendar. Okay, moved by Mr. Kraus. Is there a second?
Seconds.
And seconded by Dr. Yarnow. Are there any items that anyone would like voted on separately? I would like to have the bills list voted on separately. So we will have a, if everyone is okay with that, we will have a vote on everything minus the bills list first.
Do I need to have a separate motion or?
No.
Okay, so we'll just do two votes.
Just a separate motion for the bills.
Okay, all right. Okay, any comments or questions on the consent calendar minus the bills list? No? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. All right, motion carries nine zero. All right, do I have a, is there a motion for the bills list?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, second? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved by Mrs. Miller and seconded by Dr. Yarnow. Comments or questions? I would like to abstain from this vote because there's a reimbursement in my name. Does anybody else have any comments? Okay, so I will call the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And I abstain, so the motion carries eight zero one. Okay, next item is the student liaison report, and we have Jordan Altamar here.
Thank you. I just have two announcements for the student council. This Wednesday, starting at 6:00 a.m., we have our spring breakfast, and the community is welcome to come to that. It's $5, and students are also welcome. And then, secondly, this Wednesday, we'll just be having our talent show during second and third period.
Okay, thank you, Jordan. All right, next is the president's report, and I just have two things to share. One, I just want to mention that on March 8th, the board participated in a workshop, and that was run by PSBA. So that was great. Studies show that, you know, boards who engage in, I guess, learning opportunities, you know, will perform better. I hope we will have the opportunity to have some more events like that throughout the year. And then, the other item that I want to share is that we are working on our, the district is working on its comprehensive plan. That needs to be, it's a process going on through the, throughout the year. The Bucks County IU is helping with that. There was a survey back in the fall. And anyway, so people, I believe 1,300 residents weighed in on that. The administration has been going through that. So there's going to be a, I believe it's called a steering committee, and there are, we're looking for community members who want to be involved in that. So if the steering committee will meet on Tuesday, April 10th, and I believe tomorrow, Mr. Ferry is going to be putting out an announcement. If people are interested, there's going to be a form for people to fill out, and then the district will inform people, you know, who can attend. We need a cross-section of people from the community. So I just wanted to share that. He's going to be sending that out, and those forms will be due next week, and then people will be informed next week as well. I just realized, you know, there were some questions, or a lot, mostly comments during public comment, and I just, I apologize, just going back to some of those questions. One was regarding the tech school budget, and I don't know, I don't have the answer to that. I don't know if Mr. Doggedor, anybody knows if it's posted online or if it will be posted online?
I'm not aware if it's posted online, if the, by the VOTEC school or not. That's their budget. I can ask them.
Okay. It is.
I believe it absolutely is posted, but of course, it is, has not been passed. The request tonight is for the passage of the budget here. The other two sending boards also have been requested. They may have already voted on it, I'm not sure. But then, once it is passed, if it is not passed, of course, the VOTEC will have to rework the budget before, you know, and ask the sending boards to do it again.
Okay, so that will be, so I mean, so it is posted?
It will be posted, I believe. I don't know whether it is posted currently, but it will be.
It is posted currently? Okay. Okay, so it is posted on the tech school website, not on ours, because it's their budget. And I don't have the answer as far as the, as far as contracts, so I will have to look into that if we post contracts. So I will have to find out. And somebody also had asked about April 20th, and I don't have an answer to that. I don't think anybody has an answer to that right now. Um, I don't know even what's proposed, or what, so, yeah. I'm sorry, go back to you. Yeah, so I don't, we have to, we'll share that when we know. All right, I think they were all the questions that I could answer.
There's two more. One was, any board members object to enforcing policy? And was any other plan proposed to us that evening?
Okay, well, I think some people addressed that in their comments, and Dr. Radigan gave a statement.
On the Nattatoria? No.
But yeah, I mean, some, I don't think we can answer every question, and I don't, I mean, I did not write that question down. So if you feel like you didn't have a question answered and wanted to ask it again at the end, I don't, I don't have that one down. So I can't answer, we can't always answer every question, and if there are questions directed at individual board members, we do not do polling of board members. We don't ask people, what is your view, or anything like that on any issue? We don't poll individual board members, and we don't have board members answer questions directed at them as individuals, because that's not, that's just not how it operates, and that's not, I believe that's in our policy. So, we are moving on, then, to the superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Yardley. A thank you to the Central Middle School for the district office meeting room display. And as Mrs. Yardley pointed out, we are in the midst of preparing our comprehensive plan for the next three years, and one of the requirements is a special education plan that is part of that. So, Dr. Woyorka, would you like to just give the community an update, please?
Yes. The special education plan is developed and submitted to the Pennsylvania Department of Education every three years. So tonight is the first, is the draft of the plan that will be presented as an informational item to the board. The plan will then be put on the district website tomorrow for public review for 30 days, and then, at the next board meeting in April, it would be board-approved if everybody is in agreement. And then, by May 1st, we submit the plan to the Department of Education. It's a pretty detailed plan. It lists the committee members, which consisted of regular education teachers, special education teachers, a parent. The Pennsylvania Department of Education dictates what the, what questions they ask us, and then we answer some narratives related to that. We also must list all of our programs and services that we provide, so that is the bulk of the plan, the current programs and services that we're offering to students in the district right now. And then, it, in the, at the end of the plan, it asks for our personnel development and what we're going to be doing over the next three years to make sure that our employees are receiving the professional development that they need.
Thank you. Who care takes pride theme of the month of April will be initiative. Students will be reminded that initiative means making decisions and taking action on your own without the advice or help from others. People who demonstrate initiative take steps to make things happen. They design a strategy to solve a problem or make a plan to achieve something they desire. I have some points of pride for this month. The Pen Ridge Community Education Foundation has named high school assistant principal Nick Skunover, custodian Darrell Lowry, and Penn North middle school teacher Glenn Wonder as winners of its 2018 Friend of Education Award. They will be honored at a lovely evening, April 24th, at the Sellersville Theater. Tickets are $20 each and are available on the foundation website, or by seeing Mrs. Christine Yardley or Mr. Joe Ferry. The Pen Ridge High School debate team went three to one in the two Lehigh Valley Interscholastic Debate Association competitions last week. Questioner Sidney Lee took down the competition, and President Courtney Landis earned top scores. James Morrison provided outstanding rebuttals, while Sophie Sabrano contributed amazing speeches. The team sits in second place with one round to go. Congratulations to Bryce Schmel for being named Student of the Month for March at the Upper Bucks County Technical School. Bryce is a senior in the Small Engine Technology Program. He is an all-around academic success story. He has earned first honors numerous times. He is a member of the National Technical Honor Society and is a frequent flyer on the Pen Ridge Honor Roll. Bryce is active member of the Trombawards Wolf Fire Company and takes firefighting classes every Monday night. He is also a Boy Scout who enjoys the camping adventures that he has been able to attend through the organization. He is currently employed at Trombawardsville Lawn and Recreation. He works six days a week, four of which are through the school's co-op program. He plans to attend Lehigh Career and Technical Institute for Heavy Equipment Operations after graduation. The Percocie Rotary Club honored seniors Courtney Landis and Oliver Jervis as its Students of the Month for January and February. Courtney, as you heard, is president of the debate team. She is also captain of the tennis team and member of Key Club, Student Council, and the National Honor Society. She has taken several AP courses in chemistry, biology, calculus B.C., statistics, psychology, language, and Spanish. Courtney has been named a National Merit Commended Student and received the Scholar-Athlete Award in girls' tennis. She plans to attend college as a biochemistry major on a pre-med track. Oliver has played football and baseball all four years in high school. He is a member of Pen Ridge Pals and the Fellowship of Christian Athletes. Oliver won the Widener Leadership Award this year. He plans to attend Monmouth University to study business and to play football. We have five teams comprising 33 students participating in the 2018-19 Odyssey of the Mind Tournament. Hundreds of students from across southeast Pennsylvania participated in the regional competition Saturday, March 3rd, at Pensbury High School. Our teams have been working for months on a long-term solution to one of five problems and had to compete in a spontaneous competition where they were presented with a challenging problem to solve on the spot. This year, four of our five teams placed second in their problem and division and will advance to state finals, which will be held at the Swiftwater Campus of the Poconos School District on Saturday, April 7th. Teams qualifying for advancement on April 7th will be invited to join hundreds of U.S. and international teams at the world final competition at Iowa State University from May 23rd through May 26th. Pen Ridge teams qualifying are the following. Grass Elementary, Division 1, Problem 1. Central Middle School, Division 2, Problem 3. Central Middle School, Division 2, Problem 5. And the high school, Division 3, Problem 5. Congratulations to these students and their coaches, and good luck next month at states. That's my report, Mrs. Yardley.
Thank you, Dr. Radigan. All right, we move to our committee reports. Mrs. Cullen?
Thank you. First item that we have are the minutes for the March 12th meeting, but as we discussed earlier, we're going to see if we can go through that. I know that I at least have the list of people who spoke. I won't try to recreate their comments, but we can list them, just so that people have an idea of the people who spoke, and if we can find out any way to recreate the comments, maybe we'll do that. So then, we'll move on to the next item, which is the approval of the J.M. Brass Overnight Trip. Yeah, no, I could, the screen. Motion to, I'm making a motion to approve the J.M. Brass Elementary Historic Triangle Trip to Williamsburg, Jamestown, and Yorktown, Virginia, from Monday, June 24th, 2019, to Wednesday, June 26th, 2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Cullen, seconded by Dr. Yarnow. Any comments or questions? All right, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Mrs. Cullen?
Okay, and the next motion is a motion to approve the MOU, that's a memorandum of understanding, between Pen Ridge Board of Education and Pen Ridge Educational Professionals Association, implementing a four-day summer work week for the time period of June 18th, 2018, through and including August 10th, 2018, should the student year end by June 15th, 2018. Or June 25th, 2018, through and including August 10th, 2018, should the student year end by June 22nd, 2018. It's kind of confusing, but.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, moved by Mrs. Cullen, seconded by Mrs. Miller. Any comments or questions? All right, seeing and hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Mrs. Cullen?
And the next committee, activities committee meeting is scheduled for, it doesn't come up on my screen, April 30th.
Okay, thank you. All right, the next committee report is curriculum. The curriculum committee met on March 5th and discussed the writing proposal that we've a motion for. There was also the elementary scheduling committee presentation. The computer, sometimes when you hit the wrong thing, it goes away. And then, the mid-year update on district achievement by Dr. Schein. So we have a few motions. A couple of them are carryovers from a past meeting. So the first motion is to approve the program improvement proposal for middle school canvas expansion. So I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Mrs. Yardley, seconded by Mrs. Miller. Comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
One nay? Okay. Motion carries eight one. All right, next, I would like to move to approve the program improvement proposal for middle school social studies. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved by Mrs. Yardley, seconded by Dr. Yarnow. Any comments or questions?
This is for the social studies book, right? I didn't get a chance to look at it. I don't know if we can table it until we draw, we'll look at the social studies book, and then we'll try to get that to compare it.
Okay, so you can make a.
Table it, I think it's right where.
Okay, yeah. I think it's possible. Okay. Mrs. Yardley, can I?
I'll second that. I'm sorry.
Who?
I'll second.
Okay.
Can I just comment that we used to meet over in the DAO, when they had curriculum changes with books, they would actually bring the books, I think you recall that, till we all got to pass them around. Is there any way we can do that here? We never get to see the books, or is that difficulty set up?
Dr. Schein?
No, we certainly can when they're available to us. This particular photography book wasn't available to us.
Right, I understand with this one, I do. But just in past, you know, practice, we used to have the books available when they were available, and then they used to be passed around the board so we could see them all at one time. I understand with this one that it was not available, so thank you for clarifying.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion on the table to table this motion. So that was moved by Ms. Kildare and seconded by Mrs. Vanas Clemens, correct? Okay. Any comments, any other comments or questions? All right, so I will call that motion. All those in favor? Aye. Okay, opposed? Nay. Nay? Okay, so I'm not really sure. So the ayes, can you just have a show of hands, because I'm not really sure. So to table it? All right, so if that's six, so the tabling motion passes six, three. So we will table that to the next, to next month. All right, next, I would like to make a motion to approve, to approve the program improvement proposal for K to V writing program. Do I have a second? Moved by Mrs. Yardley, seconded by Mrs. Vanas Clemens. Any comments or questions?
I have, I have a comment. I got to the opportunity to go and visit in West Rock Hill, who's currently piloting the writing program, and I just can't even tell you how, I didn't think I could be even more impressed by this program after hearing Mrs. Washam come in here and present it to us, but going out to the school and actually seeing it in action, I, you know, it was, it was amazing. It's everything you'd want in writing curriculum. I was in four different classrooms, and every single student in every single classroom was engaged and loving writing. I've, you know, that's, that's unheard of. Every teacher that I passed, teachers were flagging me down in the hallway. If you want my opinion, I love it. Every classroom that I was in, the teachers loved it. I'm really excited about this program because it's going to do wonders for our kids. So I just wanted to thank everyone involved in the literacy committee, Dr. Schein, Dr. Radigan, Dr. Wiley, the teachers at West Rock Hill for piloting it so passionately, and I'm really excited for this to roll out to the other elementary schools.
I do know there are several board members who went. I visited West Rock Hill. I believe Mrs. Walters did as well. I don't know if anybody.
I went to West Rock.
Yeah, so it was nice, thank you, Dr. Schein, for setting up that opportunity for people to come in and see that.
I agree. Thank you, Dr. Schein, for escorting me around.
It certainly was my pleasure. Thanks to all of you who did come and see the wonderful work that's happening at West Rock Hill, so I appreciate those comments. Thank you. All right, any other comments, questions about that one? All right, so I will call the motion. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. All right, the next curriculum meeting is, I believe, April, Monday, April 9th. Is that correct? Yeah, so Monday, April 9th is our next curriculum meeting. All right, thank you. Next up is facilities. Mrs. Vanas Clemens?
Thank you. The first motion is to obsolete items A through H.
Do I have a second?
For Michael?
Okay, moved by Mrs. Vanas Clemens, seconded by Mrs. Cullen. Any comments or questions? All right, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, motion carries nine zero. Mrs. Vanas Clemens?
Okay, the second motion is to approve change order number two, Ace Electric, Inc., MDF slash IDF Electrical Upgrades, project number 230099, district-wide cameras, a deduct of $30,000, $30,198.79, credit for unused allowances.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, moved by Mrs. Vanas Clemens, seconded by Mrs. Dolan. Any comments or questions? All right, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Mrs. Vanas Clemens?
Okay, the next motion is to approve the request for waiver of building use fees for East Rock Hill Township's use of the high school's gymnasium on March 14th, 2008, and possible follow-up hearing in the near future if needed.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so who's? Okay, moved by Mrs. Vanas Clemens, seconded by Mr. Kraus. I just want to note, I think you said 2008 and not 2018, or did you say 2018? Well, we'll just clarify, it's 2018, whatever. I heard 2008. Any comments or questions?
I would just like to make a comment. This, this waiver isn't the amount of $60, so we're not talking a lot of money here. It is $60.
And haven't they, they've done things for us before? I can't remember exactly what was said, but.
Yes, actually, sorry, I should have mentioned, they, they have made, they have waived permit fees for us in the past, so we have a relationship where we help them out and they help us out, and so we, they have waived a lot of significant permit fees for us, and we're just waiving a small building usage fee.
Do we know, have they scheduled other hearings since this meeting already happened?
Not to my knowledge, but they've scheduled another one yet. But just to clarify, since 2003, East Rock, East Rock Hill Township has waived $122,000 in permits and application fees for the Pen Ridge School District.
And this, I just want, this motion is only related to this, this hearing, that they're having any meetings associated with the hearing that they had on March 14th?
Yes, the hearing they had on March 14th and a follow-up hearing.
Related to?
Yes, just related to that hearing.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Mrs. Vanas Clemens?
Okay, the last motion is to award the bid for the Pen Ridge South Middle School paving repairs to Blooming Glen in the amount of $307,823.75. Due to a clerical error, this bid was incorrectly awarded to Barker &amp; Barker Paving in the amount of $317,935 at the February 26th, 2018, or school board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved by Mrs. Vanas Clemens, seconded by Dr. Yarnow. Any comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Mrs. Vanas Clemens?
The next facilities committee meeting is scheduled for April 11th.
Okay, next committee report is finance. Dr. Yarnow?
Thank you, Mrs. Yardley. The finance committee meeting did have a, or finance committee had a meeting on March 14th, and that meeting included alert presentation, the normal review of contracts for approval, also discussion and review of the Bucks, for Bucks County Technical School tentative budget, as well as the budget review for the Pen Ridge School District concerning transportation maintenance and the general fund. So the first item that I have in the form of a motion is the approval of the contracts that were discussed that night. They are items, there are actually six of them, items A through F as listed. I move that we approve those.
So, did you?
Yep.
Okay, all right. Sometimes I'm not sure if he's saying it. All right, moved by Dr. Yarnow, seconded by Mrs. Dolan. Any comments or questions? All right, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Dr. Yarnow?
Thank you. The second item is the approval of the Upper Bucks County Technical Schools 2018-2019 budget. I will note that this is something that is sent to all three sending districts, asking the boards to approve it. It requires approval by majority of each, two of the boards, and a total of at least 14 affirmative votes among the 27 members of those two or three sending districts. So the budget is here. The number for Pen Ridge is a decrease of more than $200,000 this year. I would urge you to support this budget. I support it somewhat reluctantly because it has a huge amount of unbalance that needs to be used, but we do anticipate trying to address that issue sometime during this year, but not for this budget. So I make a motion that we approve the Upper Bucks County Technical School proposed budget for 2018-2019.
Second.
Okay, moved by, so the motion to approve the Upper Bucks County Technical School 2018-2019 budget was moved by Dr. Yarnow and seconded by Mr. Kraus. Any comments or questions?
I have a comment. Relative to Mrs. Furlong's question earlier on, in that budget, in the tentative budget and the final budget too, there is a page which discusses the amounts that each of the three districts send, as well as the percentage that each of the three districts contribute to that budget.
as well as the percentage that each of the three districts contribute to that budget.
Does this need to be a roll call vote? Dr. Yernow?
No, I don't believe so.
I don't know that it has to be, as long as Ms. Kraus knows who voted and how. That would be an issue covered by the bylaws, but there's nothing in the school code that requires that. The bylaws for the Upper Bucks County Technical School, but a regular voice vote will be fine.
I believe last year we did, that's what I was asking. Okay, so we'll just have a voice vote then. So any, any other comments or questions? Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine, zero. Dr. Yernow?
Thank you. I would also note that the next motion has to do with the approval of the developed premiums for the 2018-19 school year. Those premiums are listed in the agenda, and I would move that we approve those premiums. I believe they are the same as they were last year, just as a point of reference.
Is there a second?
Second.
Who's seconded? Alright, thank you. Alright, so the motion to approve the developed premiums for the fiscal year 2018-19 as listed with no change from 2017-18, moved by Dr. Yernow and seconded by Mrs. Cullen. Comments or questions? Did I ask for that?
No, you didn't.
Okay, no, I didn't. Okay, comments or questions? Okay, I don't see any, so I will call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, motion carries nine, zero. Dr. Yernow?
Thank you. Lastly, I have a motion to approve a confidential settlement agreement identified as, relating to student two zero one eight dash twenty-five. I move that we approve that agreement.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Dr. Yernow, seconded by Mrs. Miller to approve a confidential settlement agreement for a student identified as 2018-25. Comments or questions? Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine, zero. Dr. Yernow?
Thank you. Finally, the next finance committee meeting will be held on Wednesday, April 11th, and there will be a budget presentation or presentations that night, so it is an important meeting. And I will mention also that that night, we will look, we, the district, will be looking for guidance from board members as to what we wish to do in terms of the budget, because obviously, the time for the proposed preliminary budget vote is coming. That comes in, in May, so we need to know what direction. So hopefully, board members will give that some consideration and thought before that meeting and offer their thoughts that night. Thank you.
Thank you. Committee, the I U committee report, Mrs. Miller?
Thank you, Mrs. Yarley. The Bucks I U met on March 20th. Due to inclement weather, Dr. Hoffman and I deemed it advisable to hold the meeting by way of telephone conferencing. Reports and presentations were deferred because it was by telephone until our April meeting, when hopefully, we can finally meet at the Bucks I U facility in person. I would like to share the legislative report that the Bucks I U puts together monthly. In response to recent events, there are serious conversations concerning school safety and security initiatives in the Pennsylvania General Assembly. While still a long, a long way away from any final decision, there's recognition that this is a priority issue that will require state investment. More than twenty-six bills have already been submitted concerning school safety, and Chairman Dave, David, I'm sorry, David Hickernell wants to sort and consolidate those bills while taking the opportunity for committee members to better understand the issues through a hearing on school safety issues. The auditor general Eugene D. Pasquale announced on March 8th that he will make significant changes to how his department reviews safety at Pennsylvania schools. The auditors will now be checking for what they have determined to be the most serious violations of school safety. The list includes, there's many of them, lack of single point of entry and exit, unlocked and unoccupied classrooms, gyms, and auditoriums, lack of annual practice drills involving first responders, school grounds not patrolled by school resource or security officer, failure to provide annual training on the emergency plan procedures with all staff, exterior doors not numbered or otherwise labeled on the outside to assist emergency responders, no alarm systems on exterior doors, no assigned or designated staff, student, and visitor parking, no signs directing visitors to the main office, delivery logs not maintained, central security alarm not active during school hours, play and recreation areas not protected with fencing, vehicular access not restricted around play areas as part of the stepped-up school safety efforts. D. Pasquale said he will immediately add school safety objectives to all school audits and reviews and expand the distribution of confidential school safety audit results beyond the current distribution to school superintendents and school safety officers to include the Pennsylvania State Police, Attorney General, and local police departments. And Dr. Radigan, I believe most of these we are already in compliance with, so maybe we can make a note of these. Now, it will not affect any funding. I think you just get a nick in your audit, but anyway, on paper, but still, we should be cognizant of them. General, I'm sorry, Governor Tom Wolf announced the creation of a school safety task force to discuss ways to improve school safety and security. The task force will include government officials, school officials, teachers, parents, and students. A lot of focus on security and safety. In other areas, bills to watch are House Bill 638, which was approved by the House State Government Committee and placed on the House calendar for future consideration. This bill would remove the ability of school board candidates to cross-file the nomination petitions. Senate Bill Two, I've discussed this a couple, I believe, two meetings ago, establishes education savings accounts, E S As, for students to use at private schools or with private vendors, including tutors. This bill is described as a voucher bill and takes money from the state subsidy for low-performing schools to be used by a parent or non-public, I'm sorry, for non-public tuition and other services. One hundred school districts so far have adopted resolutions opposing the implementation of the E S A, including some of our close neighbors of Centennial, Council Rock, and Quakertown. I do have a copy of that resolution if the board chooses to put this forward, opposing the bill, so let me know and I'll supply that for you. Dates to remember, April 17th. Our next I U meeting will be held at the Administration Building, weather permitting. April 28th is the Bucks I U Annual Run, Walk, Roll fundraising event. It offers a one-mile fun run and five K race. It's always an uplifting, fun day, and I encourage you to join me. May 24th, County, the Bucks County hashtag Girls STEM Conference will be held at Delaware Valley University with over eight hundred young women from across Bucks County expecting to participate. Women interested in volunteering, as presenters have until April 2nd to register as a presenter. See me for details. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. Alright, the next committee report is personnel. Mrs. Cullen?
Thank you, Mrs. Yarley. I have a motion to approve an increase in the summer worker hourly rate. So it's a motion to improve an increase in the summer worker hourly rate to nine dollars and twenty-five cents for high school students under eighteen and ten dollars and twenty-five cents for over, those over eighteen, and also a twenty-five cent increase for each subsequent summer employed.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, moved by Mrs. Cullen, seconded by Dr. Yernow to approve an increase in the summer work hourly rate to nine twenty-five for high school students under eighteen and ten twenty-five over eighteen, and a twenty-five cent increase for each subsequent summer employed. Comments or questions? Alright, staying and hearing now. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine, zero.
Mrs. Stolen is not here.
Oh, I didn't realize she left. Sorry. Eight, zero.
Okay. The next motion is a motion to approve revised job descriptions for the following positions: a teaching assistant for the high school laboratories, confidential secretary to the director of administration, secretary for payroll, and the secretary to the Department of Human Resources.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Mrs. Cullen, seconded by Mrs. Miller. Comments or questions? Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight, zero. Mrs. Cullen?
The recommended action motion to approve the extended employment contract of Dr. Troy Price as Director of Administration.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alright, moved by Mrs. Cullen, seconded by Dr. Yernow to approve the extended employment contract of Dr. Troy Price as Director of Administration. Comments or questions?
I have a comment. I oppose the language in this contract, so I won't be voting now. I just wanted to say that that is why I'm voting now, when it comes time for the vote.
Anybody else? Alright, I will call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries seven, one. Mrs. Cullen?
The next motion is to approve the extended employment contract of Mr. Sean Daubert as business administrator.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Cullen, seconded by Dr. Yernow. Comments or questions? Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Is it now nine? Okay, motion carries, did you vote on that one?
Yep.
Yeah, okay, motion carries nine, zero.
Sean.
Sorry.
I read the law.
Alright, Mrs. Cullen?
Okay. The last one is a recommended action motion to approve the extended employment contract of Mrs. Jacqueline McHale as Director of Human Resources.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved by Mrs. Cullen, seconded by Dr. Yernow to approve the contract of Ms. Jacqueline McHale as Director of Human Resources. Any comments or questions? Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine, zero. Mrs. Cullen?
Thank you. The next personnel committee meeting is scheduled for April 30th.
Okay, next committee report is policy. Mrs. Miller?
Thank you. Policy also met on March 12th. I have one motion to recommend the first reading of the following policies. Zero, zero, five regarding organization, and policy number three, oh, two, employment of superintendent slash assistant superintendent.
Alright, is there a second? Okay, moved by Mrs. Miller, seconded by Mr. Kraus. Any comments or questions? Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine, zero. Mrs. Miller?
Next meeting, Policy Review Committee is scheduled for April 30th.
Alright, next committee report is the Upper Bucks County Technical School. Mr. Kraus?
Thank you, Mrs. Yarley. The J O C met on March 15th. Coincidentally, this was the same night as the General Advisory Committee had their appreciation dinner. Was, the dinner was really good. Students did an outstanding job on that. The J, the General Advisory Committee are business leaders and entrepreneurs from the community who provide guidance to the program design up at the Votec. Just to give you a little context of who the General Advisory Committee is. As Dr. Radigan already indicated, the student of the month was Bryce Schmel, and you've already indicated all his accolades, so I'll reiterate that. April 13th, some dates to remember, April 13th is the 2018 Free Sustainability Expo, hosted by Palisades High School. That will be from 5:00 to 9:00 P. M. There's over thirty vendors and organizations with inspiring presentations of all the positive ways you can move forward toward a healthier, sustainable life, no matter what your budget. Saturday, April 28th, 8:00 A. M. is the Kissel Dental OutRun DK Five K Run. This is a, this is a fundraising five K race organized by Kissel Dental to benefit the Upper Bucks County Technical School Dental Clinic. The race will be held at Quakertown Memorial Park. Registration is at 7:00 A. M. Cost is twenty-five dollars if you register before the 11th, thirty dollars if you register after the 11th. And the next J O C meeting is scheduled for April 19th.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus. Next committee report is Act 48, Mrs. Walters. Oh, sorry, technology, sorry, skipped that. Mr. Kraus?
I heard that, I missed her.
The Technology Committee met on March 5th, where Mrs. Miller shared an overview of the district's technology and commitment to expanding the use of technology throughout. There were no motions brought forward. The next Technology Committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, April 9th.
Okay, now we have Act 48, Mrs. Walters.
The Act 48 Committee met on Thursday, March 8th. On the agenda, Dr. Price spoke of a program that the district was looking into as another form of professional development for our staff called Educator in the Workplace, connected classrooms with local businesses. We also got a brief update on the comprehensive plan, and he shared details on an upcoming, the upcoming Steering Committee meeting, which will take place on April 10th, which I believe Mrs. Yarley spoke of earlier. And then the staff that were present at the meeting collaborated to prove and update the Title Needs Assessment Educator Survey. Our next meeting is going to be on Thursday, May 10th.
Thank you. Next committee report is Penrich Area Coordinating Committee. Mrs. Stolen and Ms. Kilgary.
We didn't meet on March 22nd because of the snow day that the community suffered. Our next meeting is tentative. I believe we got a email today saying that we moved to the 19th of April to do the coincides with a commissioners' meeting that is on the 26th of April. Did I get everything? I thought so.
Okay. Next item is old business. Anyone have any old business? Okay, next item are announcements. So the next regular school board meeting is scheduled for April 23rd, 2018 here. There was an executive session held prior to tonight's meeting for the purpose of discussing personnel and contracts. The announcements say that there is one scheduled following tonight's meeting, but we will not be having that because this meeting is ending too late, because we still have public comment. So that meeting will be another time, and I will announce that when we have it. So we are back-
I should have said in old business, but I just wanted to thank Anita for all her years-
Can you speak up?
I wanted to thank Anita for all of her years of service, because we noted on her retirement today in our E D R report. So thank you for everything that you've done for us.
Thank you all.
Thank you for bringing lots of stuff going on tonight, so. Lots going on, so, alright, we are back-